Well, Sid's got it.
My allergies, oak trees, if you can get to oak trees, I'll be fine.
You know, we have so much of this stringy algae in our pond this year.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out how it got there. We can't get rid of it. Stringy algae.
Okay, everyone, I'm going to go ahead and call the town hall meeting to a quarter. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I want to give a special thanks to Low Grissom, the rector of St. Paul's Episcopal Church, for opening up the doors of the church tonight. Let's give them a big round of applause. So, the order of business tonight, we will take time for the, like we have done since I've been doing this office, we will start with, the department has given reports, we'll have a little bit of time left for questions from you all. And I have an opening statement I would like to make. I usually give a little bit of an overall report of what we've been doing since we had the last town hall meeting. And some of the things that we've been working on in the last six months is, first of all, I want to give a little report on the parking deck, which is really moving along. We're going to be, Jeremy will give you a little bit of a report on that later, but it looks like we will probably have that parking deck ready to go by sometime in October. So, that's going to be really, really good. As you have seen, we're starting to plant the trees on crossover, which is moving along. Another really good report is that the Van Ash extension from the Sam's Club to the mall will probably open, be opened sometime in early July, so that will be finished. We're going to start the work on Rupel Road, and we're going to start breaking ground on it somewhere around July on into possibly August. But that work will begin July probably, sooner if I can get it going. As you can see, Whole Foods is going up. I see Mr. Clark here tonight. That's pretty exciting news for us. I know Whole Foods is building that big store and bringing in about 10 more businesses with them. That should be opened up around October, you think, Mr. Clark? So, that's going to be a real exciting event for us. We have started the, oh, the building permits, want to give a little report on it, they're up from last year.
Quite a bit.
So, people are really starting to build in the city. Jeremy will probably give a little report on that. We have started the design phase of College Avenue. So, we should be getting construction on College Avenue sometime in early 2016. That's looking pretty good. The regional park, Connie will probably give a little report on the regional park, but it's, it's moving right along. We're in the design phase, Connie, is that correct?
Yes, we're in construction.
So, that's going to be starting.
It's going on.
It's going on.
If it would quit raining.
Yep. And certainly, last but not least, was the opening of the Razorback Green a couple of weeks ago. We had a thousand people there on hand. I had, I don't know how many we had down at the train station, but we had two cars full, however many that is. So, we probably had 100 and between 100, 200 people went with us. Is that, would that be fair, or somewhere along in there? And I also want to thank Sandra Smith, the city clerk's office, for being here tonight. Leave out anybody, all right? Another thing I wanted to report tonight is some of the things that we're working on, I know with St. Paul's Episcopal Church, we're working on the Maglin House, which is working with women that have been in trafficking and prostitution, we're going to set up a house. And we had a great turnout for that a couple of weeks ago. It's a very important thing that we're going to be working on. I think we can handle between around eight ladies that's going to come in, and I think that's going to be a very important work for this city. We are continuing to work on our efforts with, some of the, this is some of the stuff I'm working on is the homeless situation in the city of Fayetteville. I know that we have a goal of reducing homelessness in veterans by zero by the end of the year. That is my goal. Working with the first phase of the Woolsey Farm, that's restoring that historic farm out there. Working on the, or working with Ozark Literacy Council on working with students that have a trouble reading, I'm going to be working with some of those students. So, that's some of the stuff that's going on in the city right now. So, a lot of things going on, a lot of good positive things. So, we'll start with Jeremy Payne, tonight, the city of Fayetteville, runs planning department and about everything else in that area. All right.
Thanks, everyone, for being out here, and welcome again to St. Paul's. As the mayor mentioned, we have quite a bit of construction going on in the city, not only state highway projects and city projects on our roads and bridges and trails and sidewalks, but also in private development construction. Our commercial construction right now has almost doubled in valuation compared this month, or this previous month, to last year. So, we know commercial development in particular is picking up, and residential development is not far along behind. So, we're doing, doing quite nicely in terms of revenue with permitting and development. What I want to talk about tonight, primarily though, is the Spring Street Municipal Parking Deck. In October of last year, the city council approved a construction contract with a company called Baldwin Shell Construction. They are a construction manager on this 240-space parking deck, which is located at the corner of Spring and School, which is right behind the Walton Arts Center. The parking deck was planned, has been planned for many, many years and discussed for many years, finally coming to fruition. So, my purpose here is to show you basically some photographs and kind of walk you through the process of the construction as it's gone. It's gone quite well, we're on schedule, so I'll report that first, that's always the good news, and plan to open by the end of October, 1st of November. And so, we're moving along at a quick rate, goes faster sometimes than we can even believe it, so. So, here's an idea of kind of what, from a bird's eye perspective, if you were flying over, this is generally what it would look like, and I'll get you oriented here. So, you've got Spring Street along the south and School Avenue here. The back of the Walton Arts Center is here. So, if you know the Black Box or Star Theater over in this area, and the main auditorium is up here off of Dixon Street. This is our construction site. It's a four-level parking garage with an access here from School Avenue at one level and an access from Spring Street at another level. If you'll remember, if you're traveling down School Avenue away from Dixon Street, it starts going down that hill, so you get all the way to another level by the time you get down to Spring Street. And then it wraps around a few times to get up to the final and fourth level. We're also building three small buildings. We call them liner buildings because they line essentially parts of the parking garage. It helps to screen the parking garage, but also provides some activity and liveliness to the street when they're occupied. So, we have a south liner building here and an east, what we call the east liner building here. These are small, single-story, pretty small structures. The larger one that you see, and you'll see in the photographs, it's rising up, is a three-story liner building in this location. This building was planned and designed and constructed to be a replacement for the Walton Arts Center administrative offices. We demolished those offices, they used to sit right here. It was a single, one-story old office building. We demolished those to make way for this project. So, we're replacing the square footage there. We're also providing some square footage expansion, which the Walton Arts Center is paying for that expansion, but for future needs, as you know, they're going through a very large expansion project that will kick off this summer to their own facility, and so this will help enhance those abilities to provide services for our cultural engine here in northwest Arkansas. And then the very lower level is a basement, which provides an expansion of back-of-house facilities. Back-of-house facilities are things like dressing rooms and costume, design areas, staging, all the things that make larger shows, Broadway-type shows, possible in a theater this size. And they were simply running out of space for that. They're using other theater space, they're using a ton of different ways to make that work. So, this will assist in their expansion as well. This is the second, third, and fourth level. So, basically, all the levels, this is a full level, and the second, the third, and then the fourth is really just a small extension up here to get the 240 spaces. Just starting construction back in October, we really kicked it off kind of the beginning of December, so that's where we start these photographs. They excavated the site. We did not run into any voids or rock, that's always the worst thing you can have, that can happen in excavating. So, we didn't run into much of any of that. So, there's some site photographs, real quickly, of what we were excavating down to, to get into that basement level. So, you're looking there at the back of the Walton Arts Center building. This is beginning, as you can see, in the snow. This is in January, they're starting to pour footings and foundations for the structure itself. So, what we're looking here is toward the Grubbs Building, which sits right there. And this is the footing for this liner building, actually, this south liner building there. I'm going to run through these quite quickly, because we have a lot of presenters tonight, but I just wanted to get you, the scale of the structure is pretty immense when you walk, walk around it. All the steel and the rebar is quite impressive of a structure. So, we're definitely getting our money's worth in terms of that. This is the basement wall, the north basement wall of the north liner building. So, this would be, has higher ceilings, actually has a mechanical mezzanine within the structure itself to allow all the HVC equipment, everything is sort of suspended, so it doesn't take up any floor space, so they're able to use the entire area for that. This is the elevator shaft, starting to take shape. The elevator will sit right in here. Here's the doorway into the liner building. You can start to see plumbing under slab, things of that nature. All of these shapes here are columns that are being poured as they go up to each level, and so those were, we had to drill those down an average of 20 feet in depth down into bedrock, but to get three feet into the rock before, that's what our specifications called for, to be able to withstand the load. Looking back toward Walton Arts Center and Dixon Street, this is along School Avenue, so you can see how they had to excavate, this is kind of where the curb, I guess the curb's still there, excavate where that pavement used to be down to be able to build these walls. These are big pumper trucks, so they pull in the concrete here with the trucks and then pump the concrete into the site. Most of the concrete here has had to been, had to be pumped to get into the property. Some additional sites, this is where the at-grade structure ends, this is the, kind of, this wall right here is this wall right here. You can see these little dots represent columns, that's how many piers and columns we had to pour. And that little column right there sits right there, so they're about to tie this wall into that column. By March, we were starting to see the steel occur on the liner building that you can see from here, looking south and looking back north. So, that's the, that's the roof essentially of the third floor, there's a basement, first and second floor. So, we're starting to see that take place. We had a few rain days in March, as you can see here, actually made up the time the very next Saturday, and so, or next couple Saturdays, I believe, so we didn't lose any time for rain. I can't say that I said, I can say that for this last week, unfortunately, but we've done, done well so far. Start backfilling the gravel. We have a cistern that's located underneath the parking garage, takes several thousand gallons of water and takes it off of the roof and holds that water, and we can use it for irrigation on the actual site, so we're able to reclaim and reuse some of the water off of the site. It also has an overflow, so it fills up, it goes into the storm drain system. One of the, some of the exciting parts of this project are some of the major concrete pours, and so they break them up into various pours. This pour one happened on March 25th, and so what you're seeing here is they poured essentially from this level on up, and then I'll, I'll show you the next one they poured from here to there. So, you can see a bunch of people involved in this, they start at 4:00 AM in order to finish the pour that day and allow for all the finished work to occur, and they're pretty much out there the entire day in order to complete this. So, you can see the barrier going down in yellow, and the rebar there on top of that, and then they pour the concrete on top of that and finish it. Just several shots of how massive of a project this is. This is all the same day. We've had materials delivered on site, it's a very tight site, any downtown construction is, but they've been quite resourceful in using the space that we've been able to allot them on site, so they deliver things when they, when they need them and stage them elsewhere when they don't. This is after concrete's been poured and it's curing, so this is about six days later, and they're getting ready for the next pour. You can start to see level one and the ramp up to level two right there. Put this one in here, this is the mayor tying some rebar. We took him down for a tour to see the, see the site before our next pour the next morning, and of course, if you're the mayor, he likes to get his, his hands in, involved, so we appreciated that, a little free labor there. Pour number two happened the next day, and we, we poured this level here. Similar photographs, except that now you can start to see the ramp and the entry taking place, how all this comes together. In this photograph, you can start seeing these little, we call those, Chris? Supports essentially, supports for the elevator deck pour, which means they put these supports underneath and then put the bracing and everything in place in order to be able to pour the deck above it, because it's suspended above that. So, they're beginning that work already. Both pours have come together very well, really nothing, nothing to speak of, which is what we always want in construction, just a normal day's work. You can start, start seeing in the background these steel clad, this cladding structure, all the stud work beginning to take place, take shape on the liner building. This has now been completed, they've fireproofed the structure, this is early, early shot of that, but they fireproofed the entire structure as necessary. This is a shot of the basement space. If you'll remember that one photograph, there's where the, that north wall was, it was a real tall space, I think these are 19-foot ceilings to allow for some of their larger stage props and things to go in. And then it has a mezzanine, I mentioned this mechanical mezzanine that hangs down to allow them to still utilize the space underneath. This is a shot that's important because that's where the door to the Walton Arts Center structure will be cut. So, this is an important connection right here that we make into their existing facility so that we can tie in. It's a shot of our east liner building there, like I said, it's a pretty small structure. Elevated Pour One happened last week, last Tuesday, I believe, and so I have just a few shots of that, and then I'll wrap it up. But we will have a second elevator, so this is the Elevated Pour One, I'll have another one around this level, and then basically just continue going up like that all, all the way until they're complete. So, that's that pour, and they're already set up for a portion of the next one. So, we actually now have a deck instead of just a parking garage, so we know it's going This is looking at, again, you can start to see all the wrap here in the structure, it's in the dry, all the mechanical and electrical, all that's going in now. The building should be completely in the dry, begin to be occupied sometime this summer before the parking deck's actually complete. This is looking in from the corner of school and Spring today, and in not-too-distant future, you'll be seeing that structure there. Take any questions?
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Jeremy. Now, we have Chris Brown, chief engineer. Make sure that whatever ideas the mayor comes up with on infrastructures are dealt correctly.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is a picture of our transportation bond program. This is a map that we've used since the start of the bond program, and you can see that it's color-coded for the various phases of projects. We've got more and more yellow on there all the time. Yellow is good because that means it's completed. So, you can see some of the, some of the projects that have been completed. I'm going to go through just briefly some of the projects that we have under construction and then coming up over the next two to three years. There we go. First of all, Van Ash Drive, as the mayor mentioned, it is under construction. We are planning to complete that in mid-2015. Notice I didn't give a month, I said mid-2015, so give me a little leeway there. The contractor's working really hard, they've had some weather setbacks, some utility setbacks, but they, they have worked very well and are, are getting a lot of work done. Do have a couple of pictures. This is the trail on the south side of Van Ash. You can see the median, this is the median section through here, so this is the median of the street, and of course, this is the south side. This is a 12-foot wide trail. It's actually part of the Claver Creek Trail System, so it'll connect the Sam's Club area eventually, as Claver Creek comes out there, to the Skull Creek Trail, the main spine of Skull Creek. This is looking west, just west of the Gregg intersection, so we're looking back towards This is looking back to the east and near Highway 112, so the existing portion of Van Ash, that's now two lanes between I-49 and Highway 112, is being widened to four lanes as well, with a fifth lane through the intersection. So, there's still quite a bit of work to do here, obviously. This was taken a couple of weeks ago, so there's still quite a bit of work to do on this stretch of the road. This last picture is on Highway 112 itself. This is Highway 112 turning and going to the west here. We are reconfiguring that intersection, it will be a T configuration when it's done, so you'll come up north from Sam's Club to a T intersection. That's our master street plan, that's our goal, is that the east-west routing for Van Ash and Howard Nickel will be the through route, and then the north-south will tee into that. We will have a signal here hopefully soon, that the highway department did not approve the signal as part of the construction, but we do expect that just almost immediately the traffic will warrant a signal, and we'll go ahead and install the signal. So, unfortunately, we may have a month or two, or possibly longer, if we can't get the warrants to meet, that we will have a three-way stop here essentially. So, something we'll just have to, have to deal with or work through the process. Moving on to some projects that we're working on in design this year, Zion Road, east of Lowe's, between Vantage Drive and Highway 265, that project is in design, it's about 50% complete, will be acquiring right-of-way, relocating utilities this year, starting construction on that in early 2016. Old Wire Road is a project that, the main goal of this project is to have better bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. We do have some widening at some of the major intersections, but we are planning a wider sidewalk trail on, on one side of the road, and essentially extending the sidewalk, so we have continuous sidewalk on Old Wire. That's in about three different phases, so we're showing construction 2016, 2017. We will start construction on a portion of that next year. College Avenue, as the mayor mentioned, this is kind of an extension of the project through the downtown area with sidewalks on the, on the sides of the road with the trees and the tree wells and the street lighting. We show that as Maple to North. We are looking at the concept and looking at the cost of continuing that on up to Sycamore Park. It's a project that we have $2 million, is what's been appropriated by the council, so we're going to have to determine how far that $2 million can go. I, I'm fairly certain we can get up to North Street, we'll just have to see how, what we can do with the rest of it. Again, as the mayor mentioned, we're designing that now, with construction planned in 2016, and we probably, within the next couple of months, will be having at least one public meeting to get some input, have some discussion, let, let the folks start seeing what this project looks like. Maple and Lafayette Historic Bridges, we are inching closer to starting construction on this project, and I do mean inching. A few years ago, we, we were discussing the project, and there was a possibility of getting a million dollars of federal aid, and we, we did pursue that, and we did get the federal aid, which is the good news. The bad news is you have additional hoops to jump through with the federal aid project to spend that money. Throw in the fact that this is a historic bridge, those additional hoops became flaming hoops, so it's been very, very difficult, a lot of things to work through, a lot of agencies we had to work with, but actually, I'm hoping this week that we can advertise the project for bids, so we're that close. We're really, we got everything turned in to the highway department for their review to get the authorization, authorization to advertise, so this summer, we will be doing the improvements to do. Lastly, of the transportation projects, Rupel Road, we've got three segments here. This first part is the extension from Al Creek down to Highway 62. That is, we're in acquisition right now, we've got about six properties acquired, there are large properties that are essentially vacant pieces of property, so we're talking about land purchase. We do have about 20 acres of right-of-way to purchase for this, so it's a pretty extensive right-of-way. As soon as we get that right-of-way acquired, we will be ready to move into the bidding and construction phase of that. Hopefully, in June, we'll be able to go into the bidding process, construction in July, if, if all goes well. The next phase of Rupel is actually widening between the Boys and Girls Club and Weddington Drive. We're working on that design right now, we've got some acquisition, we'll be doing this the rest of this year, and then we're looking at starting construction on that in early 2016. And then finally, another federal aid project is the, the intersection at Mount Comfort, Rupel Road. If y'all have been out there, you know that's a kind of a difficult intersection, doesn't really work very well, so we're looking at connecting that to existing Rupel Road, making that intersection work a lot better. We do have a bridge on that project, and so the expense is pretty high, but it is a, it is a good project and one that's very much needed. Also wanted to talk briefly about this project. This is not a transportation bond program project, but it is one that's happening near the downtown area. This is a drainage project, and this is, this is Maple Street here, Walnut Avenue and Olive, so Mission Boulevard is over here. There's an existing drainage way that kind of cuts cross-country here under multiple houses. It's badly undersized and really in bad repair. It, it creates really some pretty major issues for, for these folks in here, some pretty extensive property damage when we do have large weather events. So, it's a project we've wanted to do for several years, we finally were able to collect enough funding to do it. So, starting here at the downstream end, south of Walnut, or sorry, west of Walnut, coming up Walnut, we'll be coming down the middle, or down the, down the street, the north side, and turning and, and picking, finishing off right here. So, the red route is the, the new route of the pipe. It will have some traffic impacts, it will have some property impacts, but it's a project that, again, is, is very much needed and is going to be helpful for this neighborhood. Switch gears real briefly and talk about the trails program. We, as y'all know, the engineering division handles the design and permitting, getting all the trails ready for construction, and then our transportation division picks up and does the, the construction, then goes to our parks department for operating the trails. So, some of the projects we got in 2016, 2015 include Claver Creek Trail up around the school between Holt and Holklum Elementary's, or Holt Middle School and Holklum Elementary. That project is, is planned for this year. We do have a boardwalk on a portion of that. We also have a bridge that has some federal aid funding, so we're working with the highway department, so we hope to get that project underway later this year. The other main thrust is this loop trail, this is, this is the Frisco Trail, Walker Park here. Right now, we're finishing this segment of the Frisco and then turning into the Town Branch Trail here. We'll continue with this piece of Town Branch, I'm going to go to the next slide, this is just a larger view of that. Continuing with this piece of Town Branch is the next phase, and then finally, this piece. So, to create essentially a loop between the Frisco Trail, the Town Branch Trail, and the Jollawgee Trail here. The other major trail that we're working on is the Cato Springs Trail, which comes off Town Branch and goes to the Regional Park. We do, by the end of 2016, plan to have that trail completed as well. I'm going to go through just a few pictures here. This is the, the Town Branch Trail, the bridge over Town Branch Creek, another view of that. This is Town Branch Trail looking, that's actually School Avenue right there, so that's the bridge underneath. This is through Walker Park, we reconstructed that trail, widened it out to meet our standards, another view of that. And then lastly, just wanted to talk briefly about this, this is something that you'll see on our trails, wayfinding, our mile markers, these will go on the poles, we'll have the... We'll have the name of the trail here, and then the mile to the hundred. So it'll be helpful for convenience for folks to, you know, know how far they ran, walked, biked, but also for safety, so that if you have an emergency, you can identify. You should be able to see one of these from almost any vantage point on the trail, so you'll be able to call out the mile marker and folks can get to you quicker. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Terry Gully, who's in charge of the Transportation Department?
Good evening, Terry Gully, Transportation Director. Just gonna give you kind of a quick overview of what our construction projects for both sidewalks and our overlay program were this year. Dixon Street, this year, we've kind of narrowed it down to we had four to five major projects that we were gonna hit, that were all major connections throughout the city. These are some, how it exists now, this is the south side of Dixon Street, and showing you some of the difficulty we're gonna have in building this. Chris's division is in the process of finishing up the design on this. Like you can see, that railing right there on the left picture, that's quite a drop-off there. We're gonna have to extend some box culverts, and we do have some property owners that are being pretty generous about giving us right-of-way along that south side as we go up the hill. Maple Street was on our original plan to do. We were doing a cooperative agreement with the U of A. However, they deemed that trying to make a connection down off Stadium by the new high school was a higher funding priority for them, so they asked us to work on switching that out from Maple to that this year. So they're doing the construction of the sidewalk down along the soccer field and the new, well, not new anymore, but the softball field. And then they're gonna extend Leroy Pond, which is the road on the south side of Bud Walton, to tee over into what was the old Virginia Street, and actually put a round, mini roundabout there. And then they'll build sidewalk back to the south and connect up with what the high school is finishing up at the last phase of the high school. So this one will probably be back on the list in the future. Our plans were to, you know, to widen these sidewalks out and to put streetlights and make a connection up through campus. That's just some more pictures of what we would've been doing on Maple. Markham Road is another one that is on our list. This is one we've been currently working on. It shows you where it was nothing but woods, pavement adjacent to the edge of the road there, in the wooded area, no curbs or anything. We've gone through there, applied this new sidewalk there, curb and gutter on the south side. This is actually all complete now. The only thing we really lack on this is the topsoil, which if anybody knows where there's a dry topsoil anywhere in the two-county area, I'd be happy to know that number, because we can't find it. So we've got several projects that are just held up by only being finished due to that. Mission Boulevard's another one. This is kind of looking from essentially the left picture from Tim's Pizza, looking toward the viewpoint across from the graveyard across the street. The, shows you some of the issues we'll have with this one. This is the one, top-left picture's looking up towards Eureka Pizza, and this is kind of down at the bottom right before all the utility boxes before we get to Tim's Pizza. Just another shot in the same area there. We've got quite a bit of bank there to do retaining walls. This is actually gonna be a 12-foot wide sidewalk. It's gonna be not only a sidewalk, but a portion of the trail system also, to connect around to Park Place. So once we get this done, we'll have a continuous walking from those Park Places all the way to Root School. This is right in front of Eureka Pizza. South School Avenue is another area that we were concentrating on, trying to make a connection from MLK down to 15th Street. We ran into some issues with obtaining right-of-way there, as you can see some of the obstacles here also. You know, we've got to extend culverts. And then this is down south, just north of 15th Street. We have very little right-of-way down here. So what we're gonna do, and probably start in this by the end of the week, is to actually start at MLK and go south to 9th Street, to where the trail connection is, and go ahead and install that part where we have all the right-of-way obtained at this time, and get that going. And what that'll do is, you don't wanna go through the tunnel under MLK and wind around the trail there. You can actually cut through the light and then head further south along the east side of the highway there. Okay, our overlay and our microseal projects, this is, that's as big as I could get it, but essentially, we had 19 streets, I think there is, on our overlay project where we'll go out mill and put back new asphalt. The red ones are ones that we've actually already completed. We've done, I think, 10 out of the 19. With Markham, with any luck, will be also paved tomorrow, so we'll have one more done tomorrow. So we're well into getting these projects completed. We hope to finish those in the next two months. These are just some pictures of some we've done. Laverne and Lorena are down south of Cato Springs Road. These are ones we did about a month ago. This is actually Sutton Street that we did about a week ago, between Washington and Olive. And then this is Willow Avenue, where it's looking south from Lafayette back towards Sutton, and we also did all the way up to Rebecca on the other side of Lafayette also. Anyway, that just shows some of the work we're currently doing at this time. I was saying, if we didn't have those cars down at the end, we would have a prize where who could guess the year the pickup was made. Say, early 60s. Microseal projects, we'll run through a little bit of that real quick. These are some of the streets we're doing that. They're usually in newer neighborhoods where the asphalt's somewhere in the 10 to 12-year-old range. It's starting to crack, but it hadn't cracked really badly. When we do all this, we'll have about 7.4 total miles. And then this is kind of our microsealing process, where we'll go in, take a street where the grass is starting to grow along it, we'll go in and crack seal, that's what some of the darker lines are throughout it. And we come in, we hire this done, to come in and lay this about 3/8 inch layer of essentially asphalt product. It's got very small grit in it and asphalt emulsions. And what we're trying to do is seal this back up so that we're keeping the water from penetrating the sub-bass, because that's what causes failures in the road. This is just showing the process. They load this truck up with all this, it kind of goes down like a slurry seal, but it dries much quicker. It's pretty much, you can put traffic on it an hour afterwards if you're rolling, just rolling straight and not doing a lot of turning movements. Kind of shows you on the right where we cracked seal before, kind of looks like a child jumping across the road. And then on the left is where we've actually pulled the one side of the slurry. It goes down brown, turns black as quick as the water evaporates out of it, and then, and it looks like a new street when you're pretty well done with it. That's showing half and half. There's a close-up of kind of the real gray oxidized on the right in the lower right corner, and then the new sealed street on the other. And these are a couple of pictures of, pretty much, that's just finished, still drying, and then that's pretty much finished product. It's hard to, for most, to really not realize that's been completely milled and maybe not had two inches of asphalt put on it. Anyway, that's it.
All right, thank you, Terry.
For those who may not know, my name is Paul Becker. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the City of Fayetteville. You've seen all the infrastructure that we have been doing here at the city. All of this takes planning. Annual, excuse me, every other year, we pass a capital improvement project plan, as we did last year. That plan takes into consideration all of this work that we're looking at. I'm gonna touch on 2014 and talk about the operating results for 2014. As we look at it, we center on the general fund, because the general fund is the one fund where revenues are not restricted as to purpose, so in other words, that's a discretionary fund. We ended up going into reserves to the tune of $2 million in the general funds last year. Now that sounds bad, except we had programmed that we might go into reserves as much as $6 million. That is because of salary increases, because of the completion of the parking deck financial plan, and a purchase of Mount Kessler. So we talked about going to reserves, possibly $5.7 million, but only went into reserves $2 million. Remember, Mount Kessler was $1.5 million. We paid $3 million for the entire purchase of the property, thanks to the grant that we had from the Walton Foundation, so that was a very, very great addition to our park system by doing that. So actually, we did much better than we had thought. Had we subtracted all of those things that we had planned on going into reserves for, expenditures were down about $1.7 million. As we analyzed this, came forward into 2015, based on that, we recommended a salary increase. The mayor's plan for salary increases this year was recommended to the council and approved. Those increases were approximately 3.9% on the average for departments, with the fire department receiving an additional percentage for that, their annual percentage was about 6%. That is because two years ago, we did not bring the fire department up, we did not have sufficient funds. We felt at that point in time to bring them up to what market is, so we brought them up to market plus planned for an increase in 2015. The results of 2014 for the other funds were, we had small surpluses in most of the other funds. We did have a deficit in the Parks Development Fund of about $500,000, but again, I want to remind you, we bought a substantial purchase of property by Gullig Park for $1.1 million. So we could've gone into reserves for over $1 million, but only, was only necessary to go into reserves for $500,000. So I was very happy with the results of last year, especially when we look at all the infrastructure programs that we were able to get rolling. Now, we based this year's budget on conservative budget estimates, based on an estimate of 2% of expectations for sales tax. We're doing much better than that right now. Everything else was expected to be flat compared to what we generated last year. So again, we looked at that, we had a conservative estimate for revenue and based our budget on that. How are we doing so far in the first quarter of 2015? Again, as I already talked about, we had the salary plan moved forward based on the operating results or the good money management from last year where we didn't spend as much as expected in the general fund. So first, for the first quarter, sales taxes have been up over 5% over budget. Now, I don't expect that to continue to the end of the year, but that's very good news, so we generated about $400,000 additional to expectation at this point in time. We've been able to complete the plans and move forward for a couple of very important construction projects. One is the WAC expansion. Not only are we doing a deck down in the Dixon Street area, we're also helping participate in the expansion of the WAC facility itself, as approved by the voter, in using HMRs to float some bonds for that project. So we're moving ahead with that construction phase. We're also moving ahead with partial funding from those HMR bonds for the Regional Park. That is coupled together with monies that we have been saving for Phase 1 of the Regional Park. So those are two very important capital programs we have going forward. Now, the concerns I do have going forward are that, number one, we are having national slow growth, 1.5% to 2%, and that's why we've conservatively estimated revenue and estimated sales tax to be at 2%. There isn't a lot of growth in disposable income, and this concerns me because we're being driven right now by retail sales and a little kick in the housing market. However, if job growth and disposable income growth don't expand, I for one cannot see how that's gonna be sustainable in the long run. Right now, it looks pretty good, but I do have concerns in those areas. So I guess the bottom line is, right now, as I look at quarter one, things are looking very, very well, considering what I had expected to happen. Each month, we had very large increases compared to last year. That includes February, which had some very bad weather, and I had expected a decline. So I'm very happy with the position we're in right now. We've got a lot of capital programs going forward, and I guess that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. Tim Nylander, our Water Sewer Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to touch on some capital projects that we're doing this year. The ones, a lot of our time's gonna be spent on administering the contracts for relocating the water and sewer lines because of the transportation projects that are going on in the city. The right-of-ways are getting expanded, so we've got to move those water and sewer lines out of those right-of-way. We've got a large sewer project that's gonna stretch from Ramsey to north of Township. That is gonna reduce and eliminate overflows in that area, and will also increase the capacity of that sewer line. We're also gonna be painting the water storage tanks on Baxter Lane and the one on Mount Sequoia. Those will start this fall. The in-house jobs that we're doing are gonna be the water and sewer inside the Regional Park. We're gonna do that with our own forces to save money for ourselves to complete that project. The Kessler water line that comes down from the Kessler tanks, an 18-inch line that loops in that side of town, half of it was done with city forces, and we're doing the other half with a contractor. That should be done in two or three months. And that's about it. That's all I really wanna touch on, on the capital projects.
Thank you, Tim. Peter Nierengarten, our Sustainability Director, his next report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Again, Peter Nierengarten, Sustainability Director for the City of Fayetteville. Just wanna touch on a few of the exciting projects we've got going on in the Sustainability Department and in other departments throughout the City of Fayetteville. The first exciting item I'd like to share with you is Fayetteville's proud to be the first city in the state to launch a PACE program. PACE stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. PACE is essentially a financing tool for property owners in the city to finance energy efficiency, renewable energy, water efficiency, solar-type projects on their property, and I would encourage you, if you're interested in exploring this financing tool that's available to property owners inside the City of Fayetteville, to check out the PACE program website at It's a really exciting program and looks to start growing across the city and across the state of Arkansas. Not only are we offering energy efficiency financing tools for citizens of Fayetteville and property owners in Fayetteville, but we're doing our best to make our city-owned facilities as efficient as possible. These two photographs are of two recently completed lighting retrofit projects, one at the Yvonne Richardson Center and another at our recycling and trash facility. At both of those buildings, we replaced older-style 400-watt, really high-energy-consuming lighting with new LED lights that provide better quality light, more light at lower energy consumption. You can see in the analysis for both projects, the utility company was generous to us in both projects in providing handsome utility incentives and helping to bring the payback for both of those projects down for us. Really excited to continue working on these types of lighting projects. In other exciting news, in early April, the City Council adopted our new active transportation plan. This plan has six goals that talk about including multimodal transportation options for citizens, creating trail connections for residents, shooting for a 15% bike and walk mode share in the City of Fayetteville, connecting missing links, working with our partners, and striving to become a League of American Cyclists Silver Community by the year 2017. It's a really, it's a really educational document. It's about 36 pages long, not something you have to pick up and read cover to cover, but a very useful, well-written document. We're really excited about that moving forward. In other news, May is Bike Month. Happy Bike Month to everyone, and you're actually, we're actually celebrating the first day of Bike to Work Week this week, with Friday being Bike to Work Day. A lot of exciting events going on during Bike Month. The most exciting item I'd like to just share with you all is our Farmer's Market booth. It's happening every Saturday at the Fayetteville Farmer's Market on the square. We have information about bicycling, bicycle maps available, and then we also have a bike mechanic right next to the bicycle information booth. So if you ride your bike to the market and you notice a little, you know, chain rub or squeak or whatever, bring it on up there and have the bicycle mechanics take a look at it. whatever, bring it on up there and have the bicycle mechanics take a look at it, and they can get you fixed up and rolling on your way again. So, really excited about Bike Month and the activities going on there. Also excited to announce, at the end of April, six new bicycle-friendly businesses in the city of Fayetteville. We had three businesses that were awarded gold and three others that were awarded bronze. And the city of Fayetteville itself, as an employer, has been bronze since the year 2010. Happy to note that seven of the 17 bicycle-friendly businesses in Arkansas are actually right here in Fayetteville, so really excited about that. And that nationwide, three of only 120 gold bicycle-friendly businesses are right here in Fayetteville, Arkansas. So, those are some pretty exciting things to note related to the announcement of those new bicycle-friendly businesses. In other news, we're working with our recycling and trash division in the mayor's office on our recycling master plan. We're kind of midway with that plan and have a few preliminary results. We've completed a waste audit where we took grab samples of trash that came into the city's transfer station back in January and sorted that trash out into, I believe it was 34 different categories of types of trash. Happy to report that 20% of all the material that citizens of Fayetteville generate is being either recycled or composted. But, based on the results of that waste sort, we found that another 19% of the trash that's actually going to the landfill could be recycled under our current program. So, we see that as a really big opportunity. And then, another 19% of the material that's going to our landfill is actually compostable. A lot of that is food scraps and other organic material that could be composted. In April, we had some public meetings related to the recycling master plan. Had a great input session at Woodland Junior High where we had over 40 participants. And we launched a survey that we just closed today where we had just shy of 500 public input responses on that recycling survey. So, really excited about that community input there. And some of the opportunities that we see going forward with the recycling master plan are opportunities for doing a better job collecting some of those commercial and multifamily recyclables. Again, a lot of that makes up that 19% of the material that is recyclable under our current system, but just isn't making it. It's still going to the landfill. We're not able to collect it. Also, looking at opportunities for organics composting with some of the food waste and looking at opportunities for collecting and recycling construction and demolition waste. A lot of construction happening in our community, as we heard from the mayor and Jeremy. And then, also looking at regional partnerships and collaborating with some of our neighbors on expanding some of our recycling opportunities for Fayetteville residents. Last month, on April 22nd, we celebrated Earth Day, and this year, we did something a little bit new and different for Earth Day. We did a trail cleanup, and we also spread wildflower seeds along the Fayetteville Trail System. Really exciting event. You can see some of the statistics, the number of volunteers, and the pounds of trash that we picked up. And also, we collected recyclables, and we're able to recycle those materials as well, as well as spread 85 pounds of wildflower seeds that'll start blooming along our trail system over the next one to three years. So, really excited about that event. In other news, this past Tuesday of last week, the city council passed a resolution on invasive species and looking at creating a policy or ordinance moving forward that does a couple of things. Hopefully, will help reduce or eliminate the spread of invasive species in our community, work on eradicating invasive species that are already established in our community, and then also develop a robust educational component that will help citizens of Fayetteville learn how to identify and eradicate invasive species, but then also understand what are appropriate and beneficial native or non-invasive species that they could plant instead of invasive species. So, we're just beginning that process. We'll be engaging with a group of stakeholders and hopefully bringing a recommendation back to the city council sometime towards the end of 2014 on this invasive species item. Let's see, what else? Oh, I would be remiss without putting in a plug for our brand-new website that just launched this last month. Really exciting. A lot of work went into that. Our sustainability website, a little small on the screen, but we'd really like it for citizens to be able to use it as a resource for a lot of sustainability items that are out there. So, we have a section on sustainable business, sustainable homes, sustainable transportation, sustainable community, information on recycling, bicycling, and then also links to all of the projects that our department is working on. So, please, I would encourage you to check out the city's new website, and in particular, the sustainability page on that website. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Peter. Now, Linsley, we'll just move on into that as we're launching the new website at the city, which is really exciting.
Linsley Smith, Communications Director. Yes, we have a new website, and it has been up for about a month. We're all very excited about it because the community is excited about it. It's been several years that the community has expressed thoughts about how it can be improved. We had a very old content management system, and it was very hard to run information out to the public through that system. The city council appropriated funds that came from you, the taxpayers, in order to get a new content management system. Content management system is that technology that runs the website. We had the public involved in a lot of the stages in the development of it, even in the early stages of when we pulled over the information into the new content management system. We had a group of 20 people from the community who volunteered to essentially just rip the pages apart and give us some good comments and everything, and they caught some wonderful things. One thing that we were looking at in particular with this website is to make it audience-centered. How could anybody find information on the website? And when you look at our website, you will see probably four times the amount of information than some of the larger cities in the nation actually provide on their website. You can search documents even through the FTP sites on our website. We have our Media Services Division films approximately 30 meetings a month. Those are all catalogued, archived on our website where you can go back and watch those meetings if you so choose. We also have the government channel, the education channel, the public access channel running live on the website. When you're watching a city council meeting, if you miss a city council meeting, you can click on the agenda, and the video will go right to that point of where the agenda item was. In terms of audience-centered, and I will say, it's just amazing how much the public contributed to how to make this a strong website. I tell you, that's one thing you look out for, is you say, how can we work this to make it good for our community, for the people, but also people outside the community to learn about Fayetteville? And it's really thrilling to see how people are saying now, wow, I can find this information. As you saw what Peter provided, you saw to the right-hand side, there's a contact section. On the other side, you're going to have all these various links. And in the middle section, you're going to have some general just information about maybe that division or that topic. So, all the pages also have a similar look. We also had the website designed in a way that, over the past several years, websites started picking up keys of where search features are on websites. Okay? You usually find the search feature's going to be the top right-hand corner. All right? So, where on websites have people been looking after using websites for so many years? We have on there various ways that you can get to certain information, depending on how somebody comes into the site. We also looked at, in our previous site, and also phone calls. And if somebody meets the mayor on the square, or if they see us just out in the public, what's the information they want? The information they really, really are looking for, and we made sure we had that on the homepage. But, you also don't want to have a homepage where it's crowded with too much information. So, we spent a lot of time finding out what's the best way to optimize that real estate. And we have it like with government, with services, the community, doing business. How can I? And the "how can I?" Could be like, how can I apply for something? How do I access something? How do I contact somebody? How do I request something? There are various features you look on the homepage. A lot of things that we've had, and a lot of people in the community really find it helpful, to get your issue to staff as quickly as possible. There's a feature on the website, and you'll see it's a circle, and it's right on the homepage that says "service requests." Right? If your neighbor's dog just won't stop barking, I mean, when you go on there, and it'll have a whole thing listing. You see a leak, somebody needs to cut their grass, there's a code enforcement problem. And then, what you do is you just go on there, state where it is, this little information, shoot it in there, and then that can immediately go to the staff member, because we want it. We want to get that information of how we can serve the public as soon as possible so we can get it routed to the right people who can go out and check on it or fix it. And so, it's a great way to submit those requests as well. So, you can make payments online. Really, the big thing is, go on the website. We're very proud of it. A lot of staff input's been put into this over the years about how to make it more visually attractive, but how it could be a very working and workable website. So, it's really quite thrilling to have, and it's been an effort not just of content and improving that, but improving processes while we're making things, how can we serve the public even better? And refining processes, internal processes, while we're also working the website. So, please go on there. If you have additional recommendations, you can contact me, Linsley Smith. The website's Fayetteville-ar.gov. We now have our website and our email addresses with the same information. Some people say you learn things by jingles, so Fayetteville-ar.gov. Fayetteville-ar.gov. So, go there, and if you want particular staff, like I'm Linsley Smith, if you want my email, you'll know it's L. Smith at what? Fayetteville-ar.gov. Okay, yeah. And so, Connie Edmondson, C. Edmondson at what? There it goes, Stu Clark. Anyway, I'm really glad the public likes the website, and I really contribute a lot of that to our great staff and working in, as well as the amazing public input over the years. Yay! Stu Clark gets a prize for singing. So, please, please check it out. Hope you'll be pleased.
Thank you, Linsley. Now, Connie Edmondson, Parks Department. Parks Department.
We have a new parks video that's grown, shown over. Just wanted to let you all see it. There you go.
Fayetteville Parks and Recreation is recognized as the best in Arkansas, offering a unique trail network, essential recreational facilities, and a pristine park system. It's all part of the city's dedication to improve your quality of life through fostering active lifestyles, satisfying recreational needs, and preserving Fayetteville's natural heritage in order to support a vibrant community. Explore all we offer. Discover the opportunities that best represent your interests. Join the fun so you can be a part of the best in Arkansas. Find out how you can get involved at Fayetteville-ar.gov.
Glad you all are out. It's that time of season. Spring is here, and summer is around the corner, and we at Parks and Recreation have planned a lot of fun and exciting things for you to do this summer. So, I'm going to get you all active out there. We have over 4,300 acres of parks within our system. We have 35 parks, 68 different park properties. Some of the entryways that you come into, like the Archibald Yale landscaping areas, Huntsville Road landscaping, those are all done by Parks and Recreation's horticulture staff. We have 60 natural areas, over 57 miles of trails that's hard and on surface, plus we have three lakes. One of our biggest projects, well, I guess the biggest project ever that we've had is our regional park. Our citizens, back in 2000, wanted a one-stop recreation area where they could all play in one area, where kids could play softball, baseball, soccer, and not have to roam from park to park within our city. And we have a regional park that is now developed. To make that true, it's out on the southwest area of our city. If I can find the arrow. This, whoops. Okay. This is 49 right here, and Judge Cummings Road comes off here, and it comes straight to the park. Right now, there's a parking lot here that we have that's available for Kessler Mountain Park users. There's 200 acres here in our regional park. On out this way, there's over 350 more acres in a landfill. So, we have about a 600-acre park, all in one spot for you to enjoy. Right now, back in March, we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony and the starting of construction of our regional park. What's all going to go in there? Eventually, we have a great lawn. We'll have eight soccer fields, eight baseball fields, four softball fields for youth. There's a trailhead pavilion down in this complex. There's a maintenance building, sand volleyball, tennis, basketball courts. And on up this way, in the great lawn, there'll be an amphitheater, and a pavilion, and a playground, and all of those necessities that you need. For Phase One, which we opened in March, it's going to be, you'll come in, we're going to put in all the utilities, all the roads. We'll have six soccer fields and three baseball fields. We're working on the fourth one. So, we came a long ways. This project will cost almost around $28 million, in today's figures. So, we're about a third of the way there. A lot of this work that we're doing right now is moving dirt, getting the site ready to develop for the ball fields. So, they've gotten this whole area down in here already, but it's going to be gorgeous. Mount Kessler, or Kessler Mountain, excuse me, we're calling it Kessler Mountain now. This is the park area. We're trying to encourage people to come off of Judge Cummings Road and come to this parking lot right now. We have an excessive amount of users out there, which we're glad you're all out there, but the parking off of Smokehouse Mountain Road is getting pretty full. So, we encourage you to come down and utilize that. All right. Swimming pool. We're open on June 5th, and it'll go through August 16th. We have everything from swimming lessons, morning and afternoon, adult lap swim that goes on Monday through Saturday from 12:00 to 1:00 every day. And then, we have recreational swim. Our pool stays open until about 7:00. If you have a reunion or a birthday party or a company gathering and would like to rent the pool, we do have that available after hours. It's very popular. We also have dive-in movies at Wilson Park. If you have not been to them, you need to come. We have four different shows this summer. These movies are sponsored by the Fayetteville Firefighters Association. They donate money for this series. We put the, whoops, we put the big screen on top of the pool, and we give out inner tubes and stuff for the kids to play. We'll have 400 to 500 people that come. Very popular. Our movies are selected by parents. And then, we get into our B-Active camps. We have several B-Active camps that we offer throughout the summer. What we're trying to do is get the kids busy for ages 5 to 12. Most of them run. This is the Outdoor Adventure Camp. It's for ages, actually, 8 to 12. And then, we have an advanced class, whoops, I'm not used to this new clicker. I like it, though. Advanced classes for kids 13 to 15. So, if you have children in your neighborhood, or you know of children that need something wholesome to do, have them come sign up. At the outdoor adventure camp, they learn how to bike ride, they learn how to kayak, how to play archery, disc golf, just do a whole realm of outdoor things. And there's several different camps stations. We have our soccer camp. We have our tennis. Drama camp. We're just not about sports. We want to teach the We want to teach the kids how to feel comfortable getting up in front of people, how to present themselves. And the drama camp has been very successful in doing that. The kids create their own plays and they give it at the end of the session. They give it for their parents and friends and families. We also have Camp Wilson, just an old-fashioned camp that meets at Wilson Park. They go swimming, play a lot of games, and have a lot of fun. At the Yvonne Richardson Community Center, we have several fun programs that go on all summer long. Just, I have some activity guides at the very back, which gives more detail if you all would like to pick one up. They are electronic, but I did bring some paper. Sorry about that, Peter, but I brought a few paper copies. I snuck a few in anyway. Kickball Summer League, we have kickball in the summer, spring, and fall. Very popular. And then, of course, our Adult Softball League. And the Gully Park Concert, one of our favorites, meets on Thursday nights from 7 to 9. 9 o'clock at Gully Park. We've got a real sweet lineup this year. There's six different bands. So please come join us. Bring your lawn chair, a blanket. You can bring your own food, or we do have vendors there that you can eat dinner that night. We have several kinds of spatial events. The first concert's going to be Bark in the Park. That means bring your dog. We're going to have a food drive on June the 25th. And then on August the 6th, for fast times, you're to come dressed in your 80s costume. And there are many ways to volunteer at Parks and Recreation. We can't do it without you. In 2014, we had over 13, almost 14,000 hours that were donated to us. And if we put a dollar figure to that, that equates to about $307,000. So our volunteers are essential to our programs, whether it's through an adult park program, adult trail program, our different committees such as our Parks Board, Urban Forestry Board, our Trail Tracker. Trail Trackers is a volunteer program in which we have volunteers to be out on our trails to help keep them safe, to tell people which way to go. Maybe, many of our Trail Trackers know even how to change a flat tire so they can help people. And also, we just need plain old volunteers to help coach different teams at the Yvonne Richardson Center. But you can connect with Fayetteville Parks and Recreation through Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. So I hope you come have fun this summer. I encourage you to be active and enjoy the parks and all the programs that we have available for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we will take whatever questions that the audience might have. You can go back, and if we don't have answers tonight, we will certainly get them for you. What questions do we have? No questions? Yes, please.
My name is Carl Combs, and I guess this question should be directed to Mr. Brown. On the Van Ash Project, is 112 going to be a four-lane Howard Nichols Road? Or is Van Ash going to end right at 112?
The widening will end at 112. We ultimately will be looking at widening 112 on through. So one lane will essentially go straight through. One lane will be a turn lane onto Highway 112. We will have, we are adding turn lanes at 112, so we'll have three lanes on the north-south leg and the east-west leg of Highway 112. But our ultimate plan is for a four-lane road, Van Ash, the mall area, all the way west on Howard Nichols, turning south on Rupel Road. That will all be a four-lane littler section, hopefully.
But, so there's nothing going to be done at Howard Nichols intersection either? That...
Just simply adding turn lanes and creating the T-intersection that I talked about, and likely within the next...
It'll be the same T-intersection at Howard Nichols?
Oh, you're talking about at Howard Nichols?
And 112 at Van Ash.
Yeah, that intersection is not going to be, nothing will be done with it. It's actually in the county right now. And I know there's a lot of traffic there. I've come through that way myself, but it's actually not in the city limits at the moment.
I drive that every day. That's an unsafe mess right now, and I think it'll be worse. Wish there was something that could be done. Can you not lobby the state to get...
Oh, I can assure you, we've lobbied the state, the federal government, my mom and dad, but we can't, we can't seem to get the funding to continue on, but I agree with you. That really needs to go around.
Well, you know, all the new stuff's going in out there with the new church and the, you know, it's just on and on and on. 112 is a little narrow, unsafe road now, no shoulders.
I totally understand. I really, I really do.
Well, appreciate Van Ash, it's nice. Thank you.
Thank you. What else?
Dot Neely. I think I'm Ward 3 now. It changed at one point. And I'm getting used to that. I just want to say that I really appreciate all the work that's going in to expand the trail system and to add connectivity with our sidewalks along some of our major thorough fairs. And I'm looking forward to the improvement on Old Wire Road, north of the Mission-Owired intersection. I've tried to walk that stretch of road up to Gully Park, and it's really dangerous. And so the connectivity through there with the sidewalk will be just wonderful. Thank you for all you're doing to make that happen. Thanks for the new website and the parks. It's just real exciting what's happening in Fayetteville.
Thank you, Dawn. Now, keep in mind on our sidewalk program, we have been able to do about twice as much as we normally do, because we're trying to at least double the funding on what we have spent in the past on our sidewalk program. So that's real important. Goal was to get around schools about a quarter of a mile where every child can walk safely to school. That's been the goal for a long time. So we're working on that. In a lot of years that we needed sidewalk improvements, and we're getting there. Thank you, Dawn. Who else? Okay. Well, I want to again thank St. Paul's opening up their church tonight for us, and Lord Grissom and the clergy for opening up the doors. And I want to thank Saunter Smith, Ken, our city clerk, for being here tonight. I want to thank the communications staff that's doing the filming here tonight. I appreciate your work. I want to thank Chief Dayringer for being here, Chief Taber, my chief of staff, Don Marr. And I'll leave anybody out. And thank you all for coming tonight, and we will have another one toward the end of the year. So thank you very much.